Good evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock and I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Please help me welcome Dr. Erica Wakefall, Principal of CJ Hicks Elementary School and 5th Grade Scholars Zion and Aria Hopkins as they deliver our inspiration message today. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oates, Board Members, Cabinet Members and guests. Again, I'm Dr. Erica Wakefall, the proud principal of CJ Hicks Elementary School, home of the Falcons, and tonight it is a privilege and an honor for CJ Hicks to bring to you the inspiration from two of our 5th Grade students in Ms. Haynes' class. And they did want me to hold off on introducing them because they are a real treat, so I'm going to let them come behind me at this time. Let me get my camera.
Good evening. My name is Zion Hopkins. And my name is Aria Hopkins. We are from CJ Hicks Elementary School. And today we will be reciting the poem "The Oak Tree" by Johnny Ray Ryder Jr. "A mighty wind blew night and day. It stole the oak tree's leaves' oil, then snapped its boughs and pulled its bark until the oak tree was tired and stark. But still, the oak tree held its ground while other trees fell all around. The weary wind gave up and spoke. How can you still be standing, oak?" The oak tree said, "I know that you can break each branch of mine in two, carry every leaf away, shake my limbs and make me sway. But I have roots stretched in the earth, growing stronger since my birth. You'll never touch them, for you see, they are the deepest part of me. Until today, I wasn't sure of just how much I could endure. But now I've found what, thanks to you, I am stronger than I ever knew." Thank you.
Oh, wow. Thank you. So I want to ask everyone to please stand. And the Hopkins students, scholars will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I keep telling y'all about our scholars. Thank you. That was wonderful. You did an excellent job. Do... You have something not to wait for you? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you so much. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second, Akita Palmer.
Thank you, Ms. Jones and Ms. Palmer for approving, making your motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I would now like to extend a warm welcome to Amanda Basket, who will be presenting the accomplishments of the staff and students at the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. Welcome. Come forward.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oates and Board of Education members. I'm Amanda Basket, Director of Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. Thank you for the opportunity to share an innovative practice about our school this evening. I'm thrilled to be joined by some of our outstanding student leaders who will share their experiences striving to be STEM leaders of today as we present on the power of near-peer leadership at Magnet. Rockdale Magnet School is a specialized, research-focused learning community that fosters students to think ethically, critically, and independently while excelling in competitive academic environments and demonstrating high standards and expectations. Ultimately, our vision is to grow global STEM leaders of accelerated change. As we begin, I want to ask you to reflect on what was your leadership journey? Who helped you develop the skills to lead? Perhaps it was a parent, a coach, or a favorite teacher? I wonder also what impact other students had on you? Perhaps a senior officer in a club or team took you under their wing as you were just getting started? Research supports that peers and near peers, those students who are a little older but just a little more experienced than us, can have a tremendous impact. At Magnet, we have strategically designed opportunities for near-peer leadership so that it is leveraged for student growth by design, not chance. Tonight, our students will share how near-peer leadership connects those as young as 3rd grade through alumni from our first-ever graduating class who are now STEM professionals. Our first distinguished student leader presenting tonight will be Dakota Melvin.
Good evening. I'm Dakota Melvin, and I've had the pleasure of serving as a camp counselor at the Rockdale Magnet School, at the Rockdale Magnet STEM Camp. While we have near-peer leadership across all ages at Magnet, our youngest impact is with elementary students at camp. We host an annual one-to-two-week summer camp for rising 3rd through 8th graders. Magnet students run camp as counselors and are responsible for designing lessons and organizing camp. Our goal is to share, promote, and inspire younger generations to pursue STEM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. While assisting me in growing my leadership skills, it was also extremely rewarding to get back to a program where I was once an avid learner and camper when I was just nine years old.
Hi. I'm Chance Sanford, and I've served as both a STEM Camp Counselor and a LEED Counselor. So why did I come back? Because I created lasting relationships with not only peers, but students as well. Not only could I see myself growing as a leader, but the students growing as scientists, artists, mathematicians, or whatever you can think of. And our impact has spread far and wide to states even in Texas and Maine. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Salvador Cervantes, Ambassador as Vice President. Now, near-peer leadership experiences continue at Magnet with eligible middle school students and their families learning about the opportunities Magnet provides. Ambassadors lead tours, greet visitors, and travel to outreach events such as the inaugural Rockdale Science Festival and support the many events of the Rockdale Magnet Fund. As ambassadors, we work hard to be role models and demonstrate what is possible as we proudly represent our school through opportunities, challenges, and above all else, distinction. Thank you.
I'm Chanelle Solomon, Co-President of Ambassadors. Our organization raises leaders who impact not only their community, but also their peers. For example, our previous president, Amani Robertson, who influenced me to follow in her footsteps as President of Ambassadors. And not just that, but also an exceptional leader who can speak on behalf of her peers in school in moments such as this.
Now, I'm not just a LEED Counselor. I serve as Vice President of Peer Mentors. Once ambassadors have recruited in the next freshman class, peer mentors step in to continue near-peer leadership, starting with our freshman orientation summer adventure. From the very first meeting with incoming freshmen, us peer mentors work with them one-on-one to work on academic sport, social opportunities. Through peer mentors, our freshmen gain essential skills which aid them in their Magnet journey. Not only do peer mentors get recognized as leaders in Magnet, we won National Consortium Secondary STEM Schools Innovative Student Program Award.
I'm Matthew McCoy, Vice President of Peer Mentors. Through Peer Mentors, I was able to form a lasting bond with my peer mentor, Elizabeth, who inspired me to help persevere through Magnet's rigor as a 9th grader. Her guidance led me to self-confidence methods and to thrive in class. My peer mentor helped path my way to pursue an active role in clubs and leadership. Following Elizabeth's footsteps, I was inspired to become a peer mentor myself and to fill her role as a proud leader for future Magnet scholars. Beyond peer mentors, I've helped lead other Magnet community events, such as our school-wide wellness summit.
In addition to STEM Camp, I led a session at last spring's Wellness Summit. At Magnet, we are more than just advanced academics as we prioritize students' social, emotional, and physical wellness. Our Wellness Summit was started by a student-faculty Wellness Committee after returning to in-person learning during the COVID-19 pandemic. Students like me propose organizing these sessions that are presented in a format like professional conferences you may have attended. These sessions cover a variety of topics with many including hands-on experiences. I presented a session on strategies to avoid academic burnout that included a bingo game. I also attended a session Chanelle presented where we made bracelets with our positive personal affirmations. These summits empower students to lead discussions and create a safe, welcoming, and enjoyable environment for their peers. Peer leadership also extends to the classroom. One aspect that distinguishes the school is that we are specialized research institute, which means a student takes research for a minimum of three years. Our research 2 through 4 classes provide a mixed-grade level environment allowing underclassmen to be mentored and assisted by upperclassmen in the labs whenever necessary. I remember my first year in research when I was studying flight remediation, had no idea what I was doing. A senior at the time, Stor-Asser, helped me organize my research. That experience stuck with me for a lifetime to where I am now taking the optional AP Research Class and assisting 10th graders and 11th graders in the labs with botany research techniques.
I'm Prakash Gupta, Co-President of Ambassadors and a peer tutor. Like research, a majority of Magnet's electives are also mixed-grade level classes. Upperclassmen are an important part of helping underclassmen adjust to rigorous courses like AP Seminar, AP Statistics, Zoology, Oceanography, and many more. When our peers struggle, Magnet students step up to help. Another avenue for peer-to-peer academic support is our peer tutoring program. As a peer tutor, I'm available during our extracurricular after-school study time where during extended tutorial, peer tutors are around to fill in the gaps and provide support. We answer questions and help our peers complete complex coursework.
Hello. My name is Preston Bubidjade, and I'm currently the Student Council Vice President at Rockdale Magnet. Our Student Council strives to not only enrich our student body, but also to mentor and encourage student leaders through a multitude of different activities, conventions, retreats, et cetera. We pride ourselves on hosting school-wide assemblies called FLEXs to help engage the student body, as well as throwing our annual fall ball dance and giving back to the community through events like our upcoming Monster Dash. Our Student Council is proud to serve our Magnet community as having been decorated as a National Council of Excellence for over 10 years, one of the few schools in the nation with this honor, as well as being honored statewide and regionally, and we appreciate the encouragement from all of our supporters. Additionally, I also serve as Captain of the Rockdale Magnet MAP Team. Near-peer leadership is also embedded within all of our 23 extracurriculars that span across four broad categories: service, academics, enrichment, and leadership. Officers across all Magnet clubs and teams work to welcome new members through our annual Find Your Niche Fair. Within our clubs and teams' experience, we work to develop leadership and skills for all members.
Near-peer leadership also includes growing younger students to be the next officers and innovators at Magnet. I also served on the Planning Committee for the last two years of our The Best Is Yet To Come Leadership Retreat. This joint leadership retreat brings together veteran leaders across the many opportunities we've described to you tonight to plan a retreat for the next generation. Entirely student-run and organized, our major leadership clubs come together for a day of team-building, learning, skills practice, and growth where our rookie student leaders can learn from each other and upperclassmen so that the Magnet legacy of leadership may continue.
Our strong focus on advanced academics at Magnet, paired with the near-peer leadership opportunities that students have shared tonight, has led to incredible outcomes for students. Last year's class of 2024 earned over $16 million in merit scholarship offers, bringing our 24-year economic impact as a school to over $137 million in merit scholarships to students in our community. We've had 71 students present their original research at the International Science and Engineering Fair, with five students traveling to LA last spring, and three students even conducting research on the Great Barrier Reef in Australia this summer. As we move forward preparing STEM leaders of accelerated change, one outcome we can all be particularly proud of is that three Magnet alumni who have earned their medical doctorates have chosen to come back and practice in Rockdale County. Indeed, they are some of the highest examples of near-peer leadership we have as these doctors host our current students as interns in their practices now. They regularly participate in our Alumni Speakers Week tradition, inspiring the next generation during this event in the second week of school and are serving as public health leaders in the very community that gave them their start. Thank you to all of our student leaders who presented tonight for sharing their inspiring stories and achievements. I'm incredibly proud of each of them, and the positive impact that they have on our school community exemplifies our school motto of challenge, opportunity, and distinction. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the many teachers, coaches, and club sponsors who make this work possible through Magnet classes and the organizations shared, and certainly thank their parents for continuing to share these scholars with us. To our Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Oates, thank you for your continued support. Our student leaders have some parting gifts that they would like to share with you as a token of our appreciation for your service to the community. Your bags include items students designed and 3D-printed in our very own makerspace, the Innovation Hive, and a t-shirt from either camp, retreat, or summer adventure that you heard about tonight. As we look to the future, I'm confident that with the leadership and innovation demonstrated by our students, Rockdale Magnet will continue to thrive and excel. Together, we are bringing our vision of growing STEM leaders to life. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you Magnet scholars for that presentation. I see a couple of my seniors there. I'm excited for you. Thank you so much. Next, Cindy Ball, the Chief of Strategy and Innovation, will honor our staff and students. Dr. Oates? Ms. Duncan? Please join me. All right. Good evening. Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, our Board Members, Dr. Oates, and all of our wonderful guests that are here with us tonight. We have a very special program to start us off. We are beginning a district-wide service PIN program for all of our RCPS employees. So we are going to launch this program this evening and honor some of our most tenured employees. We are again launching District-wide Service PIN Program to recognize employees' years of service in Rockdale County Public Schools. Service Pins will be awarded in five-year increments. The Rockdale County Public Schools Foundation has committed to funding the Service PIN Program each year, and at this time, I would like any of our Foundation Board Members who are here with us to please stand and be recognized. Winston. Thank you. Tonight, we will award Service Pins to employees who have served in our district for 30 years or more. Schools will be given the remaining Service Pins to award to employees after fall break. Since this is the inaugural year, employees will receive the highest year they are eligible to receive. For example, this is my 18th school year, so I'll be eligible to receive a 15-year PIN. Then in two years, I will receive a 20-year PIN. This year, we will award just under 1,200 Service Pins. The years of service are as of September 2024. So if you came in October, you got to wait another year. We will award 592 5-year pins, 235 10-year pins, 204 15-year pins, 80 20-year pins, 40 25-year pins, 10 30-year pins, 4 35-year pins, 1 45-year PIN, and 1 50-year PIN. The pins are custom-made with a silver outline for years 5 through 25 and gold for years 30 and above. Each pin will also come with a new lanyard to place it on that has both the district and the RCPS Foundation logos. We will stop and do a photo after each pin-year group. So remember, the pins are in five-year increments, but tonight I'm going to also give you the actual years of service for these longtime employees. And we are going to start with our 30-year PIN recipients. And we are going to call up Master Sergeant Robert Crenshaw from Salem High School. And Master Sergeant, if you'll just wait up here and we'll get all the 30-year PIN recipients together. I'm going to call her name, although I know she could not be here with us tonight, but from Honey Creek Elementary, receiving a 30-year PIN, Christine Gigi. From Heinz Street Elementary, starting with us back in 1994, Candace Fraser. From our Transportation Department, having served 31 years, being eligible for the 30-year Service PIN, Sandra Bigby. Also serving 31 years, from Hightower Trail Elementary, Michelle Fitzgerald. Also serving 31 years, as currently a DLS-serving Davis Middle School, Joe Tompkins. Serving 33 years, coming to us from Lorraine Elementary School, Brian Smith. Also coming to us from Lorraine Elementary School, serving 33 years, Gretchen Galt. Also receiving a 30-year PIN but serving 33 years so far, from Transportation, Teri Key. Our last 30-year PIN recipient, serving 34 years, in our Maintenance Department, Howard Matthews. And we will pause here and take a photo before we move on to our 35-year Service PIN recipients. And anybody in our audience, you're welcome to come up behind me and take a photo.
We're losing your control.
And we will also put our photos on our social media. You can grab them there or email me. We can send them to you. Congratulations and thank you. And we will move on to our 35-year Service PIN recipients, starting us off from JH House Elementary School, serving 35 years. Also in our school nutrition department, serving JH House Elementary, Linda Lindsay. Now, our next recipient, served 35 years. We are sorry we lost Lorenzo Holland recently, so we are awarding this posthumously. And we will ask his coworker, Ken Bohannon, to accept this on his behalf. 35 years in our Maintenance Department. Serving 36 years, in our Transportation Department, Marcia McCart. Rounding out our 35-year Service PIN group, we have, from our Maintenance Department, serving as a stadium coordinator currently and has been with us for 38 years, Louise Chadway. We will pause to take a picture with our 35-year PIN recipients. Do you want Linda's certificate turned around?
Oh, sure. Looking over here. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations and thank you. All right. We don't have any 40-year pins, but we do have a 45-year PIN recipient coming to us from our Transportation Department, serving 47 years, Elizabeth Banks. Coming to us from our Transportation Department, serving 47 years, Elizabeth Banks. Okay, we will move on to our 50-year pin recipient. You have that golden pin ready? Okay. Now, I will say, I have to throw this in here because this is the official record in HR, right? But I know that this person probably served in a sub role even before this, but serving 53 years in the Transportation Department, Donna Beam. Congratulations and thank you. I do, I have, these have names on the back, so that's going to be the first, second, the third. In just a minute. Okay, we're going to shift gears and recognize some of our talented Magnet students that are here with us this evening. The Society for Science recently announced the top 300 junior innovators in the 2024 Thermo Fisher Scientific Junior Innovators Challenge. The nation's premier science, technology, engineering, and math STEM competition for middle students. The Thermo Fisher JIC, a program of Society of Science, seeks to inspire young scientists, engineers, and innovators to solve the grand challenges of the future. The top 300 junior innovators were selected from nearly 2,000 students from 48 states, American Samoa, Guam, Northern Mariana Islands, Puerto Rico, and U.S. Virgin Islands, who applied to compete in this competition. Students who are named in the top 10% of their local science fair are eligible to enter this competition. The only middle school STEM competition that leverages society-affiliated science fairs as a critical component of the STEM talent pipeline. The Thermo Fisher JIC reaches 65,000 students annually through the society's affiliated fair network. The 2024 Top 300 Junior Innovators Fast Facts are: They come from 36 states, Puerto Rico and the U.S. Virgin Islands. The states with the most junior innovators are California, Texas, Florida, and Utah. Their top project categories are engineering, environmental and earth sciences, and energy and sustainability. Combined, they speak a total of 20 languages. More than half of them attend public school. Research project topics include predicting air quality, treating cardiovascular disease, addressing anxiety, and using AI to diagnose breast cancer. Tonight, we recognize a student from the Rockville Magnet School for Science and Technology, who attended General Ray Davis Middle School last year when she entered the competition. Please join me in congratulating Ariana Bloomfield. Ariana's in a league by herself. Come on up. You get it?
Yes.
Okay.
One right here.
Wait, hold it. Got it? Okay, congratulations. The National Science League Institute of Competition Sciences offers online science competitions in various topics. Students answer questions on a national exam to score points for their team. The general science contest consists of 50 questions and the biology and chemistry contest consists of 40 questions each. The exam includes multiple choice questions that are based on factual knowledge as well as students' understanding of scientific processes. The time limit for each of the contests is 35 minutes and may be administered comfortably within one class period. Tonight, we will recognize students from the Rockville Magnet School for Science and Technology for placings in the National Science League. We will bring up each team separately and also have some individual placings to recognize. The first group will be the ninth grade general science team who won first place in this national competition. All right, so again, these team members are part of the ninth grade general science team who won first place. But the first three team members we're going to bring up also won individual placings. So we have two certificates and a medal for our first three team members. Our first team member, Miles Fowler. And Miles also won first place in the individual, the ninth grade general science. Our next team member, who also won second place in the individual, ninth grade general science, Wei Ang. And our third team member, who also won third place in the individual for ninth grade general science, Ryan Lin. Our remaining team members include Gabrielle Thompson, Leila Basale, Nathaniel Sneed, Anaya Cox, Olivia Brumdich, Oyen Omotoso, Isabel Jean-Louis. And we're going to ask our coaches to come up with this team and then remain up for the other two teams. Our first coach is Diana Cannon. And our assistant coach, Tiffany Jones. And we'll pause for a picture before we move to the biology team.
Big smiles, everyone, big smiles. One for Magnet News. Magnet News, big smiles.
Congratulations. And if our coaches, yes, if you'll just stay up, we'll bring up our biology team. So the next team is the biology team that placed third in this national competition. First team member, Andrew Land. You ready? Okay, just making sure. Katherine Stoltz. Salvato Cervantes. Abigail Baker. Delano Page. James Miller. Alan Nguyen. Jose Funes. Prakash Gupta. Ian Morgan. Evan Johnston. Ayet Matin. Delina Nguyen. And Emmanuel Allen.
That better? Now we get to bring up, now we get to bring up our third place chemistry team.
Prakash Gupta. Daniel Nguyen. Gabrielle Christie. Ian Morgan. Jose Funes. Zachary Thomas. Amber Lee. Sophia Zakarova. James Miller. And Emmanuel Allen.
Oh, you're good. Did you get it?
Congratulations.
So at this time, I'm going to ask the board to take a few minutes to comment fellowship with our guests. Thank you. Okay, my nose running too dark oats. It's 7:57 and the regular work session is back in order. Do we have any visitors speaking tonight? Okay, all right. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Oats for the cabinet updates.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. At this time, I'll ask our Chief Financial Office to come forth with the financial report. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oats, remaining cabinet members and community. Tonight, I'll be presenting the financial report for the month of August. This is our final financial report for the month of August. The revenues for the month were 10.1 million. And 19.6 year-to-date, 9% of the total budget, representing 9% of the total budget. Last year this time, it was 9.5 million and the year-to-date was 18.5, representing 9.3% of the budget. Expenditures for the month were $16.3 million, $34.8 million year-to-date, representing 15.7% of the budget. Expenditures for last year this time were $15.8 million and $32.8 million year-to-date, representing 16% of the budget. Our open encumbrances are $3,174,971. The fund balance is $13,377,588. The fund balance last year was $21,945,705. Our balance sheet, we have assets in the amount of $13,377,588. Our liabilities have been cleared and again, our fund balance is $13,377,588. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions, Board? Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I don't have any updates at this time.
Okay, moving right along. Please review the important reports. The cabinet has uploaded under the information section in assembly. The board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in August. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes for all board meetings held in August?
So moved, Justin.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Mr. Kenny, second by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. There is no old business and there is no new business. Last week, the board voted to place numerous action items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda? All right, a motion to approve the agenda items under the consent agenda has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and personnel?
Second, Justin.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Kenny. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Eight oh one in executive session.
It is now nine twenty and we are out of executive session. Do I hear a motion um to approve the representation of Ronna Beazer in pending litigation as authorized by Board Policy BBE?
Second Akita.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. With no further business to discuss, do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? Motion has been made by Ms. Jones, second by Ms. Mandy North. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Nine twenty-one. Meeting is adjourned.